Good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman. And I appreciate the fact that we have a new seating arrangement for staff this morning, but this is because we're going to roll right into a special meeting at 10:00. So we have three items on the staff agenda for today, and we'll do the best we can, but we will have to dismiss at 9:45 so that we can prep for the 10:00 a.m. special meeting. Three agenda items today. The South Central Kansas Economic Development District Representative is here today to kind of just give an overview of SCED, and Brent Shelton is here with him also, put some information out, maybe have a Q&amp;A period with him. Second will be Metropolitan Area Planning Department is here to talk about and give us an update on the wind and solar analysis, and of course, we've had some action with MAPC, so they can kind of give us a 30,000-foot view of what happened there, and we'll talk about next steps on what's going to happen both at the county commission and city council meeting regarding this topic. And then if we have time, we will have a storm recap from the weekend. Carl and Alora are here to kind of talk about siren deployment and how, what the theory is behind the tornado sirens, and then David can maybe give us an update on just some of the damages in Derby and what the county is doing to facilitate and help that area of the county. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with SCED.
Very good. Brent, you starting it off?
I'm going to keep it very brief this morning. I'm just going to introduce the Executive Director of SCED to you. It's Steve Wilkinson, and he is here to share an update on what's going on with SCED.
Very good. Go on, Steve.
Good morning. Nice to meet you again. So I'm looking forward to this moment. This is my third presentation. I know when I came here two years ago, I'd been on the job about a month, and I presented to Cedric County, and I was very new to the position itself at this. Been in this position now for 25 months, and I've made huge strides as an organization, so I'm very pleased to share about it. I do know that we have limited time here, so I'm going to move through this rather quickly, and I've given you a hard copy, and I'd like to just go to the third page quickly. You know our mission statement. You might be familiar with SCED ourselves, but our programs that we have at SCED is the loan program, the housing program, grant writing and administration program, as well as our weatherization assistance program. I'm really going to focus on our loan program here in Cedric County. On the next slide there, you'll see your investment. So the counties, we have 14 counties that we service primarily, and Cedric County provides 54% of the budget of that $112,000. And it is per capita, so 17 cents per capita. The last time that was calculated was back in, of course, in 2010. It was originally $86,000, and I believe a year prior to I came on as Executive Director, it was reduced to a set amount of $60,000, which is the existing investment in SCED at this time from Cedric County. On the next page, you can really see, I've just limited it to our revenue programs on our loan program, and I've added one additional one, but on our revenue program, much of our revenue comes from grants. We have a state grant, economic development administration grant, rural business tax development grant, and a microloan grant. Additionally, because of our loan programs, we have three sources of revenue, the interest income off the portfolio. We service many of these loans, and then we package loans for banks, and then we have the administrative contracts. So Mr. Howell asked about that last year. We do provide administration services for the grants here in the state of Kansas. We just implemented a fee income base as well. So if we write a grant, we used to write a grant for free. It was 100 hours per grant, and that's a lot of free hours to provide to communities. So we just implemented new contracts anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000 to write a grant. That's the market. That's what other communities are paying to write a grant, so we're implementing that. So we'll see some additional income coming in there. And then you can see on the bottom there, we just have the county fees itself. The really vital reason that Cedric County funds are important to us is that we provide a lot of business-based technical assistance, and with those grants that we have acquired, we need to have a 25% match. That's where the county fees come into. And so last year, we received a $143,000 grant from the SBA. Because of our success, they increased it 29%, and so it's going to be $182,000 for the next fiscal year for us. In Cedric County, last calendar year, we provided 83 companies over 781 hours of technical assistance. A lot of that is that mentoring and coaching, teaching cash flow, teaching bookkeeping, marketing. Year-to-date, in these first five months to May 31st, we've worked with 39 small businesses and provided over 228 hours of technical assistance. You might be aware of our loan programs. We have five loan programs we work with. We have the microloan program. We have the new SBA Community Advantage Loan Program, the SBA Guarantee Loan Program, 504 Program, and the revolving loan program itself. Going to skip one more slide over, and I'm just going to talk about financing provided to companies in Cedric County. So year-to-date, we have funded over $2.5 million, or approximately $2.5 million, I'm sorry, year-to-date, to 16 companies that created over 105 jobs or retained 105 jobs. We have approved, we just haven't funded it, another $423,000 as well for three other additional companies in Cedric County, and those were 10 jobs as well. Many of these companies are startups and entrepreneurs or businesses in less than two years of operation, and many times, those types of businesses just can't get bank financing. And so that's where we step in, is we're able to step in and provide financing for that early-stage small business. Our current portfolio right now is primarily in our microloan program, which is small businesses, and that's 243 companies in our portfolio, about $5.8 million. And of that, 49% of that is 119 companies located here in Cedric County. We created over 612 jobs with that funding, and over 350 jobs were retained. We ask, many times we get asked about our loan portfolio. As you, some of you may recall, I've been a commercial banker most of my career, so that's really, really important to me, is the loan portfolio quality. So that $5.8 million portfolio, we have a write-off in the past two years of 1.33% or only $77,000 at this time. Most of our funding purposes is for working capital, equipment, real estate, inventory, and leasehold improvements, which is very familiar, which is very common for new businesses, startup businesses. They want to go into this new store or location, they're going to ask for leasehold improvements, they're going to ask for inventory, they need additional working capital. So it's, it matches very similar to new businesses that we work with. We work with financial institutions here in Cedric County to provide the 7A guarantee, which is over 75% to 85%, up to a loan of $5 million. We work with banks here in the areas to provide what's called an SBA 504 loan, which you might be familiar with, where the banks provide 50%, the SBA provides 40%, and the borrower brings in 10%. Ideally, if a business goes into a bank, a bank's going to say, we need a 25%, maybe even a 30% down equity. With the 504, you have that advantage of only having to put 10% into the deal. So it's a great program for existing businesses that are expanding, that want to buy real estate or a new building, and we work with a number of banks here in the Cedric County itself. I'm going to kind of move forward a number of slides to the SBA Community Advantage Loan Program. So last year, when I was here, I had talked about, we had applied for a new SBA loan program called the Community Advantage Program. We were awarded that program in November. We are the only organization in the state of Kansas providing this loan program. Why it's crucial is, for years, SCED has been providing microloans, which is a maximum of $50,000. That doesn't provide a lot of funds for a startup. This program provides from $50,000 to $250,000. That allows a startup or a business really to buy equipment, a little more working capital, maybe they need to expand their existing business. So it's a really key program for that second stage, give them additional funds before they're bankable. The mitigations to this program really are the guarantee that it provides, which is 75% to 85%. This program is purposely created to focus on underserved, what they call underserved populations, and that is minority-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, disabled-owned businesses, and businesses in operation less than two years, which are typically those startups and entrepreneurs. Today, we're working with two Hispanic-owned businesses. One is a retail business that's been here on Douglas, and it's moving, it's expanding. I believe she's going to bring in two new employees to help her sell her product. She's just not bankable yet. She's been in operation 18 months, she just doesn't have that cash flow history. We're able to provide that gap financing. We have another Hispanic business. This is a financial service business. She's been in the industry for five years, and she's able to put 15% down. She's bringing in four new employees as well, and she'll be serving the Hispanic community here in Wichita. We're really excited about that, and I'm not quite sure if I know how to pronounce this word very well, but Revolutia, which is a new shipping container, I guess mall, I'll call it, here in Wichita. We have financed three businesses in there, and we're looking at a fourth one in there as well. I visited it, I think, two weekends ago, and it's just hopping. It's a really good place, a lot of young people, really providing them a place to go, a quality of life that they enjoy. The reason why the microloan programs, the Community Advantage Program are important, and your financing has helped us here, is typically what we're going to see with entrepreneurs or startups is really five weaknesses. When we look at credit, we look at what we call the five Cs. And a bank will typically provide financing if you have four out of five of those Cs. But if you're missing one, your credit administrator's typically going to say, this is a little weak, it's not bankable. So what we'll see with startups, we'll see maybe a lack of capital. Might be a young entrepreneur, just really hasn't built up that nest egg yet. We're able to provide maybe 10%. Lack of collateral. Many times, we work with technology companies, software companies, there's zero assets available there. There's just not much there. Lack of cash flow. If you've only been in business a year, you don't have a track record that a bank needs. They need at least three years of a track record. Character, credit history. Many times, these small business loans are just credit-driven. So if you don't have that credit score, regardless of mitigating circumstances, you're just not going to get in the door. Many times, we see credit history that have been impacted by medical bills, family care or divorce. We can write that in, understand why was the credit score, what was that anomaly, what can we, what are they moving, doing moving forward on the credit history? And then financial capacity. Many times, bank terms are short. With our programs, we can bring them out 10 years, maybe even 25 years. So that helps that repayment capacity. We have a slide, what we're working for here is that we have an exit strategy with these loans, and we talked about the microloan program. It's up to $50,000. The next stage is the Community Advantage, which is 50 to $250,000. So we've given them that initial funds to start their business, maybe help with their marketing plan, their website, getting into a location. Now we've gone to the next stage where we've helped them get some equipment, allowed them to have more working capital to bring in some new employees. They're in, they've been in business about three years. We want out. We're not a bank. We want to revolve these loans, so we have an exit strategy. Most of our Community Advantage loans are sold within four years, and they're sold to the bank where the deposit relationship was. So the exit strategy is either conventional bank financing, or the 504 program that we talked about, or the 7A guarantee. If the bank is still saying, well, we like the deal, still a little weak though, we need that guarantee. So we don't want to be a bank, we don't want to have these loans for a long period of time. In the past 12 months, as I mentioned, we were awarded the SBA Community Advantage Program, again, the only program in the state of Kansas. We were awarded those greater SBA grant funds, over 29% increase on those. We expanded our microloan program. We were in 14 counties, now we're in 45 counties. And then we've reduced our expenses. I'm from Seattle, as you know, so that technology is really, really important to me, efficiencies. We've done some repositioning in our loan program as well, more on the business development side, and for the first time, we're able to forecast net assets next year. So I like to say net profit, but we are a nonprofit, so we will have an increase in net assets. That's the first time since 2011. So we've worked really hard these past two years to really streamline our organization, be much more efficient, serve the needs of the community. Ways that we've done that with technology, right now, we are going paperless, can't stand all the paper that we handle, so going paperless is important. Electronic workflow. So we use SharePoint, and we use e-documents, really, really important to us. Help us, e-documents have been extremely helpful for us, because as we work with borrowers, they don't always have the time to come to us. We just email them, the e-documents, they sign them, we're done. It's tracked, it's verified, and it's vaulted electronically. We use multiple monitors. I don't know, when I say multiple monitors, if you ever had one monitor and go to two, your workflow is much quicker. You never go back to one monitor. It's much more efficient. Portals, we use internal dashboards, which is very important for tracking for the whole company. And we've gone to cloud computing. We used to have our own server, we're now cloud, which is important, so we can go on our iPads, laptops, work remotely. And then, of course, we have a customer relationship or CRM software that we're using. Right now, about a year ago, Wichita Chamber, Gary, Keith, at, I'm trying to think, Workforce Alliance, we got together and said, hey, we know there is a perception out there in the community that there is redundancy, possible redundancy, that you're not communicating. We kind of spearheaded this group, and we have what's called a regional collaboration group, and meets on a monthly basis. SCED, REAP, Chamber, GWP, WAMPO's there, Workforce is there, K96, Karen with Kansas Global Trade is there. It's a great group, working together. It's probably one of our better marketing referral sources that we have. Our number-one marketing and referral source is banks. Banks can look at a deal, say, this isn't bankable, call SCED, we'll have your deposit relationship, work with them, get that technical assistance, learn about financial management, be successful in three years, we're going to pay off your loan or provide you some conventional financing. Here in July 26th, at the Botanical Gardens, we'll be sponsoring with the regional convening, we call it regional convening partnership, a broadband and expansion and capacity conference. That's kind of a follow-up to what we did a year ago. We have a number of state reps that will be there, a number of communication companies' representatives that will be there as well, and it'll be a panel discussion, but with lots of opportunities to ask questions in the communities. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions from commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. We're putting in about $60,000.
Correct.
Do you know what the return on investment is for that $60,000?
Well, if you looked at the return, I was, I kind of thought we might go on that. So when I was looking at the jobs, we have a return of those 625 jobs that we've created. I can't, what are multiplier of jobs, that also helps retain or create on that. What I am finding, Mr. Dennis, is that when I came in, I thought the measurement would really be jobs. How many jobs have you created or retained? What we're finding is, these companies are using these funds, and they're not having to hire as many people as in the past because of technology, because of the equipment they're using. So we're looking at, when I look at rate of return, I look at the interest rate, the income, the revenue that we have to be self-sustainable. Our goal here is to be self-sustainable in the next few years. We, I don't like having to come to 14 county commission meetings and ask for investments. I'd rather be self-sustaining. I'd rather have the loan program, the grant revenue program, the other programs we have allow us to be self-sufficient. We're moving forward in that direction at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Meister has a question.
Thank you. Yes, so you've expanded, one of your slides, from 14 counties to 45 counties?
Right.
There's 105 in the state?
I know.
Are these other remaining 30 counties financially contributing to your?
Not on the microloan program. We are moving in that direction. What's been a challenge is that we have found that those areas were served by another organization. That organization was not able to fulfill their contract. We were asked by the SBA if we would service that area about eight months ago. We agreed to that, and it's really southwest Kansas, so it's Dodge, Garden City, Liberal. So we're moving out in that direction to talk to those communities. Our weatherization and housing programs are already in south-central, southwest Kansas. They're in 40 counties. We were asked to do, to serve 45 counties, so that is a direction we're looking at, also asking.
I can't remember which slide you said, how many loans you have outstanding, but...
I think it was 243 and 119 are in Cedric County.
Okay. So a question, on, is one of your requirements, besides the five Cs, are the individuals, individually or multiple individ, are they required a personal guarantee there?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. That's extremely important, you have that personal guarantee, because your primary source of repayment, of course, is your business. Your secondary source is your personal guarantee.
Right.
So you have to have those personal guarantees. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. To follow up with Commissioner Meister's question, we only have 14 or so counties paying, but you're working in a number of other counties?
Well, we've been asked, well, our housing, on the loan program, we've been in 14 counties. We've been asked if we would serve in 45 counties, the service area. We are hoping and working to move in that direction, but our service area is now 45 counties due to, I'm just going to say, the lack of success for a like organization in southwest Kansas.
So we're subsidizing those other counties?
Not yet, no. And you will not be. They will be paying for themselves. So the same counties have been providing funds to that like organization. It is our intention, of course, to go to those counties as well and say, SCED is now providing those services. We would like the similar funding that you've provided.
And you didn't list any cities? No, no cities contribute to this, just counties?
No. When the bylaws were created, and I don't know what year they're, they're created, there was a plan, and it was based on the Economic Development District that was created in 1972, that the counties would pay. And it's interesting, because I'll talk to the county commissioners, but we spend 90% of our time talking to city administrators, city council members, city housing programs, city chamber of commercees. So we are 90% of our time in the cities, but when we ask for funding, we are speaking to the counties themselves.
Okay. And you gave us a slide that shows your revenue. I didn't see a slide, did I miss it, on your expenses, where the money goes to?
The expenses go to operations themselves. It's restricted just to operation costs, operating expenses themselves.
So your overhead is $765,000, $66,000 a year? That's your overhead?
That's our overhead, right. We were above that this year. I am projecting that will be over about $40,000. I believe we're going to be greater. There's two additional sources of revenue that have not been formalized, and I believe they're going to bring another $50,000 to $60,000 in revenue. I just haven't received the formal letters from Washington, D.C. yet, so...
I guess I'm more interested right now in where the money is going, because I don't know what your overhead is evidently, or your overhead is $766,000, but...
Be glad, yeah.
With no ROI, I'm not sure where your overhead is going to right now.
So I need to ask, so when you say ROI, so where, what is the return you're looking for when you say return on investment?
Well, if we give $60,000, I would hope that we'd get better than that back in Cedric County.
Okay. And getting like that in what mode or what manner?
Well, it can be jobs created that is returning investment back into our community.
Right.
There are a number of things that go into your return on investment, so construction, that we can reap benefits of that and so forth. But right now, I don't know what our return on investment is for $60,000.
One of my challenge, Mr. Dennis, is really getting, is attaining that type of data. I don't have the personnel capacity or capability to get all of that type of data, which is great data, but I don't have...
I can't tell that, because I don't know what your overhead is.
I can, I can get you that on that side. I was, I was looking at a question that was asking about the budget, and that was asking about the revenue side from memberships, but I can get you that other half of the P&L as well.
We've got a number of other things we need to hit this morning, but I appreciate your time being here today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, what do you have next? Mr. Howell, did you have something?
I just wanted to follow up a couple of questions, Steve, if you don't mind. I have a question or two.
Oh, yeah.
Don't forget, we've got a break at 9:45. We've got two more items.
Okay, well, I'll ask you later.
Oh, okay.
We can meet personally? No, I give you an opportunity. I'm not trying to cut you off, it's just, we've got two more items to cover.
I just wanted, and I missed part of your presentation, because I buried in the email, and you changed the time of this start, I didn't catch that detail in that email. I apologize for being late, but with that, I don't see the weatherization description anywhere in the slides.
Correct.
I'm sure that that's not happening with, can you please explain where we have a part with that?
I purposely separated the weatherization program. In the past two years, it's been made clear to me that we want to stick to specifically where is Cedric County funds being credited to, and...
Right. That's a good, that's a good short pithy answer. The other part is the, these SBA loans, the people who receive those SBA loans are paying, are paying administrative fees, if you will, to your organization, covering the cost that you expend on their behalf. I mean, they're covering their costs, so these 45 counties that are providing the SBA loans to any, any recipient of those funds, they're paying the cost to SCED for what it costs to do those things, correct?
They would, they will, yes.
Really, if you separate out the SBA loans and the weatherization, our investments will fall back, is for other things. I'm sorry. I changed my microphone, I apologize.
I wish that microloan program could pay for operations. It can't, you're making loans, and the SBA microloan program, they're maximum 50, the average is about $13,000. 6% on a $13,000 loan, that's not going to pay for operating costs, no. And I can, and that goes back to Mr. Dennis's question, and I would be glad to show where those operating expenses are.
So get back down to it, if we're not doing, so SBA loans pay for themselves generally, we're not doing the housing program, or are we? I'm not sure.
We are.
We are. I'm not sure that's economic development necessarily, but, and then we have, we're not doing the weatherization, so that leaves us down, leaves us with the grant writing and administration programs, I guess.
What I'm focusing on is for the $60,000 that you've asked me to direct strictly to the loan program.
All right. That's all my questions for now. I'm going to talk with you a little bit more later on, but thank you, Chairman, for the extra time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager.
Dave, you want to go with, or whoever, I may be?
Morning, Justin.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagener, just on the wind and solar items, there's essentially three items that will come in front of you within the next couple of months. I'll talk about just one of them, which is the moratorium. It's currently scheduled to go through August 12th. The proposed zoning code changes on this that would go in front of both you and the city council are unlikely to be effective before August 12th, even if they're passed on their first time. So there will be an agenda item on the July 17th meeting to extend that moratorium, and I'd be happy to answer any questions other, if you don't have any, I'd go ahead and let Dave Yearout get started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Yearout with the Planning Department. You got a slide program, the number on the screen is essentially the case number of the proposed amendments and modifications we're making, that the planning commissioners act upon, that will come before you here in a couple of weeks. As Justin just said, this began primarily because of the moratorium established by the commissioners that was passed on February 6th. It is set to expire August 12th, and it directed the planning commission through the, with the assistance of planning staff to... through the, with the assistance of the planning staff to prepare recommendations regarding renewable energy systems, which is what we've called this. The comprehensive plan amendment that has been evaluated and present, and acted upon by the Planning Commission that will come forward to you is proposing to adopt a new plan element within the comprehensive plan regarding renewable energy facilities. It has generally policy statements supporting continued growth in the rural areas, prioritizes protection of airports and landing strips within the county, and that's partly what the maps are showing you. Also, it recognizes the importance of maintaining and protecting the mission of McConville Air Force Base. As a result of all those things, after evaluating the impacts from both wind and solar, it declares that in the comp plan that we find, or the Planning Commission is adopting a statement that the development of wind, the commercial wind energy conversion systems, the wind farms, is incompatible with the priorities and policies stated above. Solar, however, is acceptable provided that there are standards in place managing that as it comes forward, and also is directing that we continue to look at how technology may change within those industries moving forward and how it may further impact and deal with issues in Cedric County. But the primary interest is primarily in protecting the ability for the county to continue to grow and recognizing the importance of the aircraft industry within the county. Within the unified zoning code to implement those policies within the comprehensive plan, there have been some terms added regarding renewable energy. We also defined wind energy and solar energy conversion systems. There are statements in there specifically saying prohibiting the wind farm development of the wind energy systems within Cedric County. However, it does allow the solar, solar energy conversion systems, provided there are some standards that are proposed within the amendments that will address development standards as well as performance standards in what's presented and what's evaluated as they come through. They're still subject to the conditional use permit process, still subject to evaluation on a case-by-case basis. The two maps that I've handed out, the first one with the larger green circles, one of the things that was evaluated when we looked at the impact of wind facilities, we had two studies particularly, one done by KU and one done by the University of Liverpool that talked about the impact of wind facilities and that, and what they may have on aviation. And the conclusion of all that was essentially around airport facilities, there was about a five-mile ring that you should use to protect and maintain the aviation ability for use of those airstrip facilities. Bigger impacts on those were obviously on smaller aircraft where they ultralized, but it's still a factor that was taken into account. We were asked to map the impact of that five-mile radius around the airport facilities, and you've got the map that identifies where all those airport facilities exist within the county, and the green shaded area is effectively that five-mile buffer. And as you can see, the unshaded area did not leave a lot of room where facilities could go. And for a wind energy system, you're talking a pretty large area. The companies that do that will normally look to lease ground that may stretch over several square miles of area in order to make those things profitable based on their design. The other thing that we looked at with solar is a, about a one-mile buffer. This is a model that was, has been developed in other states and used on the solar facilities, and primarily they're concerned with solar glare and the impacts they may have on visual approach into air facilities. And that's what that second map does, is show roughly the one-mile area around the airports and within the proposed language coming forward is a request that any solar facility that happens to fall within a mile of any of the existing airport facilities, that they provide documentation that the FAA has reviewed the impact of that facility as it might have with respect to that airport and has signed off and said it's okay. There are apparently standards within the FAA world that they do evaluate these facilities when they come through. And this is something that's relatively common within all of the facilities and issues that we looked at. So the recommendation that's coming forward to you is essentially saying, adopt the amendment to the comprehensive plan that adopts the policies regarding renewable energy within Cedric County, which would include the city of Wichita. And with respect to the amendments, the regulations, the big one would be the fact that the recommendation is to prohibit any proposals to develop wind energy in the large commercial facilities. Now, I would note that the current regulations still allow individuals provide either a wind facility or a solar facility for themselves. Those are considered accessory to their individual property, and those are still allowed under the rules, and those have not changed. It's only when you get into the large commercial facilities that are intended to develop commercial energy that's sold wholesale into the massive grid system. So that's roughly what we've got going on. Planning Commission held a public hearing on June sixth, continued that to June twentieth. The recommendation was to amend the regulations as outlined that I gave you here, and also they then adopted and is recommending the amendments to the comprehensive plan regarding the policy statements that support what the regulations are proposing. Those did pass by the Planning Commission. There were some comments from citizens at the July sixth public hearing mostly were opposed to commercial wind facilities. There were not any opposition to any specific solar facilities, although we've not had. And there have not been applications made yet in Cedric County for either one of those facilities. But as you're well aware, the intent with whole, this whole process was to evaluate, evaluate what might be acceptable in terms of presentation and application and the kinds of information that we'd like to see moving forward. So that's the quick and dirty. We'll have more detail when we are here in the seventeenth, so, but I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
And Scott's here as well.
Commissioner Meister. David, thanks. Thanks for the maps and the presentation. So, just to clarify, I think you addressed it. So individually, mainly solar. So if you're going to commercially resell or wholesale your power, that would be an application for a commercial...
If you are doing it on a commercial scale, which is, means that you're specifically buying, there are currently laws on the books governing an individual that may put a facility on their own property and generate more than they use. It's called net metering. There's both statutes and laws governing it through the KCC that will determine how that goes back to the utility provider, but this is more, no, this is a business I'm creating.
So a, so a individual home, solar panels, fine, and...
Yes.
Commercial can be used two ways.
And if they generate excess, they have the ability to sell that back. But those are all governed by what...
Right. But a, a larger building, such as what Mays High School did, or that's still okay in our world?
Yeah. Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So just to be clear, we're prohibiting conversion system wind energy as the technology sits today.
Yes.
And we are, we are, solar conversion energy systems are not being prohibited, but we don't have any applications currently for such a system.
Correct.
But those, if we did...
We know they may come, but we're not, haven't seen it yet.
So if we did have one, what would be the process for someone who wanted to have a solar conversion energy system?
There would be an application for a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And I would say that the one company that has been most active with us in talking about the potential of creating a large solar facility in Cedric County was at the public hearing. They've been reviewing this stuff. And a lot of the stuff that is in the package coming forward, particularly from regulations, were prevented, provided by them in terms of these are the things that other states are asking that industry to provide and address when they look at an individual application at a specific location.
So the Mays solar project is considered an accessory use because they're only using it for their school. They're not, they're not selling the energy.
I don't know whether they are. I don't think they are, but, but my understanding that was done primarily for, not only as an accessory or ancillary activity to the school, but it was also for educational purposes.
So just to be clear, we are, the Planning Commission has proposed prohibiting wind energy conversion systems, but not accessory systems for individual use.
Correct.
So there's two difference. There's difference in there.
Yes.
And then the solar conversion energy systems, we are not prohibiting, right? We are going to allow those based on a conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay. And we're also allowing accessory solar systems?
Yes, and those are allowed now without having to go through any zoning process. It's just permitting.
Okay.
Hey, first of all, I want to thank the Planning Department for all the work that they've been doing on this. I know it's been quite a process that you've gone through. We, the process is going to be extended out a little bit, so as Justin mentioned, we'll probably end up having to extend the moratorium for a short period of time to make sure that we get through this entire process. But I do have one other question. On your slide that shows airports and airstrips.
Mm-hmm.
I believe there's an airstrip over in Reno County up by Chenee Reservoir. To be good neighbors, don't we need to include surrounding airports that might be affected by this?
Well, we, we had that discussion, and one of the things that we concluded was that, one, we don't know the rules and regulations governing that airport facility within other jurisdictions. Not everybody has the same rules or the same zoning processes to help protect, and we don't know the status of some of those. Now, true, they may be there, and if we're able to identify, we might be able to at least do that. But there is not a reciprocal exercise from those other counties for activity within Cedric County extending over as well. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing to manage, and also you get into some legal questions of how much you really do that. I know that, that we're required on notification to stretch across county lines, not state lines. I've been, I've dealt with that issue. But it's different when you're imposing standards or potentially restrictions because of something happening somewhere else, so, in another jurisdiction.
Okay, well, my only worry is when Justin and I attended some of the meetings over in Reno County and listened to what was going on there, there was an airport operator over by Chenee that was concerned about their system, and I don't want, now, I understand if, if wind energy is prohibited, which is what the recommendation is, it's a moot point, but I think you ought to draw the other airports outside of Cedric County on this map, just so everybody's clear that we could have impact outside of Cedric County.
We'll try to identify those, and we could, we can amend the map as it comes forward. This is an informational map. It's not a regulatory map.
I understand. One last point. What we're doing, what it looks like the recommendation is coming out of the Planning Department, is change to the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan is a living document. You mentioned that later on, as technology changes in your slides, you mentioned that there's a possibility in the future, depending on what technology is, that we could change the comprehensive plan again. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. One last thing. Okay, so just for myself, there's like a, a projected growth of our, of Cedric County to twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirty-five, excuse me, yes, twenty thirty-five. Is there any way, and I know it might get a little crazy, but is there any way to kind of put that projection on here to, just for myself and some questions I know I'm going to get from some constituents?
We can do that. I mean, among the other things that we've got mapped on, particularly when you go to the map that I've got on the screen, which is the, the one that doesn't have the green circles, we've outlined around the cities, the, the...
The projected growth?
The growth, the growth areas around those cities, because there were concerns about making sure. And under the current regulations, if an application is made within that area, that city gets an opportunity to review and comment before it goes forward, so...
Sorry, there's a lot of, a lot of things on here to look at.
That's zone of influence.
The more we do, the busier it gets.
That, that's zone of influence currently, today. Does that match up pretty closely to the thirty-five-year growth plan for the cities? Does that...
It's a prediction that most of the growth will happen within the urban areas, but, you know, we really don't map, if you will, or how, you know, where specific growth is happening in the unincorporated part of the county because it's so scattered. But it's, that's why the policy statement says, the policy has generally been to allow and accommodate that, driven by initial initiative by the landowners who desire to carve out some land and sell it or create a homesite for a child or whatever, and we're not doing anything to stop that. But every time you do that, they create that non-agricultural land use in rural areas, you're creating another potential impact for something that was impactful as, as the large wind facilities. That's where that, that theory is coming from.
Let me clarify, the zone of influence that you have marked around each of these cities was a very controversial issue a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Because the previous commission limited the zone of influence on these cities at a great deal of distress to those cities that were being limited. And so this does not truly reflect what the cities believe their zone of influence should be. Is that not correct?
Well, that I don't know. I defer to Scott on that because he was here.
Yeah, Dave was not with us when we had that conversation, but yes, that's accurate. We had several public hearings where cities attended and indicated that they felt like that they should have a larger area of influence, but that's not the decision that was made to answer the manager's question. These do closely reflect the anticipated growth of those communities through twenty thirty-five, and that's why those boundaries were reduced. The boundaries that were, the previous boundaries were, there was no real standard as to how they were set. Each city just decided what they were. Some of them had six, eight, ten square miles of influence, you know, for our community of maybe two thousand people, which is probably, you know, three hundred years or four hundred years worth of growth at their current rate. And so what this does is identify that. It's really not related so much to what we're talking about here today, but to answer your question, that's how it was established.
Well, I think it does relate to what we're talking here today because the cities, things impact the city on what's developed outside of their area. So they need a zone of influence so that they can decide whether something that's going to happen maybe two or three miles from their city is going to impact any, something that's going on within their city. So limiting the ability of them to influence what's happening in their area is truly limiting their growth and potential of, of impact of things like where that they run sewers to and where that they provide utilities and so forth, too. So I, I think that it is significant that, that their area was greatly reduced because if, I sat on the Planning Commission when this was discussed, and every city came in and said, "This is detrimental to our city." There wasn't one city that spoke in favor of it. So I think we still need to consider that. I think it's important.
And I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying that that's another issue.
Okay. Well, I was just following up on what Commissioner Cruz was mentioning on taking a look at what influences them. For example, Mount Hope here, you have a very, very small area of influence on their map, but I'll guarantee you that if we put a wind energy system within a couple of miles, they're going to want some influence on that. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yearout. So my question is similar to this influence area. So as we pride ourselves on being the air capital of the world... So as we pride ourselves on being the air capital of the world, we're going to continue to push that forward. Would this potentially limit Andale, Mount Hope, building an airport if we put the, if we allow these to be placed in those communities? And if so, has anybody from your office reached out to the city councils or any of the administrators of those smaller?
We've not talked specifically to the communities, no. But in your question, are you asking about a wind facility or a solar, or both?
Wind.
Wind.
Wind primarily. So I just think that it's much more sensitive in Sedgwick County, being the air capital of the world, than it is in a lot of the 105 counties in Kansas. So to me, I think that's something that we need to have in the front of our minds when we're thinking about wind energy in this five-mile buffer, that we're truly limiting if Andale and Mount Hope and other communities, which those are the two, I guess, incorporated cities that would be affected by this. And then the other question, in the far northeast corner of Sedgwick County, piggybacking on what Commissioner Dennis said, are there any airports that'd be affected in that corner? Like, I know Benton's right out there in Butler County. Do we know what that would look like? And could you at least present us a map that shows the outlying counties if there are airstrips in those areas? Because I know
We will prepare that.
Down in my district, just south of Hayesville, there are some airstrips there, not too far from like the Kansas Star Casino. So I would be interested to see what that looks like. And I know some of that land up there, I believe the county actually owns in northeast Sedgwick County.
Yes.
So, yes, I'd like to see the outlying areas like Commissioner Dennis was asking for.
We will see if we can identify them and create a map showing you the buffer areas around those.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, you have six minutes.
He's an army guy, he can talk fast.
That's right. Good morning, Commissioners. Carl Link, Emergency Management Director. As we all know, Sunday morning, we had high winds come through Sedgwick County and Sumner County. At, what I've provided for you is basically three pictures from GIS that show the locations of the sirens, the outdoor warning devices across the county. There's 150 of them. There are two control terminals, one in my office down on the first floor of the Public Safety Building, and one upstairs in 911 dispatching. More specifically to what happened Sunday morning at 04:43 in the morning, so 4:43 AM, National Weather Service notified us through the computer data terminals that there was a storm approaching Sedgwick County. The polygon you see in the second chart, or the second page of the handout, is what that picture basically looks like on the computer screen. With the threat approaching Sedgwick County and the system toning, it alerted the operators upstairs that there was a threat to the county, and the alert was activated. Within about 30 seconds or so, we were getting feedback from the field indicating that it was a countywide siren, and the dispatcher or the operator went ahead and canceled it. What happened about 10 minutes later was a full threat, which we'll see on the third page there, of what the polygon looks like to specifically Sedgwick County and the area across the county, southwest or southeast corner of the county that was directly impacted by that particular warning. Sirens were again activated, and you see the sirens that were activated within that polygon. So that's why there were multiple warnings that occurred Sunday morning.
I didn't know we had sirens south of Sedgwick County.
Technically, it's because we assumed the siren system for most cities back in about 2012. So those particular ones are in Mulvane, but because we've assumed the responsibility for Mulvane, we also took those sirens. So we do control those sirens.
I looked it up today.
All right. As County Manager mentioned, if I can comment a little bit on some of the philosophy behind the way the sirens are anticipated to work, or in this specific case, if you look at the second page, if any portion of a warning in a surrounding county hits any, within about a mile radius of any one of our sirens, we are going to get the notification. As you can see by that second page, it also impacted a distance far, far southeast corner of the county, which was not covered by a siren. But where you see that little polygon touch, basically, within that mile radius, that would have indicated for Sedgwick County to be notified of that particular threat in our area. So that's kind of the one over the world of what happened, so, and why there were multiple warnings.
Very good. Questions?
The only thing I'd add to that is that, at the time of that warning from the county to the south, the dispatcher supervisor had two choices, was to accept the alert or not accept the alert, and she clearly made the right decision to accept the alert, which then set the countywide siren network off, for which we're looking at the technology piece of that, the system did not malfunction. She made the correct decision. She also then had a discretionary decision of whether to shut them down after 30 seconds or keep them going. She chose to shut them down, which, that's a 50-50 call. So I think the system worked as designed, the dispatcher reacted as we want her to. And I, so I guess the only thing that bothered me a little bit is on Sunday, we were getting some social media that there was malfunction. There was no malfunction in the system at all. So we're just trying to get the information out that it operated as it should, and the dispatcher made the correct decision, so.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner? If you combine your last map with the previous presentation, I can see these airports that are sitting right outside the county. I agree. Just important.
David, do you want to talk just a little bit about Derby relief and what they experienced down there?
David Spears, Director of Public Works. Early Sunday morning, I received a call from Kathy Sexton at Derby, and they were hit very hard. Seems to be sort of isolated with Derby. Yesterday, we only received three other phone calls in the office from the unincorporated area about tree limbs. And so she requested our assistance, and I got with our folks, and by 1:00 yesterday, we had our tub grinder installed down at Derby at High Park, and we're grinding up trees at by 1:00. I thought that was pretty incredible. And we also have other machinery down there to lift the trees into the grinder, and full staff available down there. Want to say that Derby had 3,000 people bring loads in on Sunday, and yesterday they had another 1,426. We will stay down there until this is completed. And also Kathy Sexton, we talked again last evening, and she's going to open it up to people in the unincorporated area of the county to bring limbs there, which I thought was very nice of her. There doesn't seem to be too many. Like I say, it's just odd deal. It's just really isolated around the Derby area, seems to be. So I think that's about all I have to say on that. Glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner Howell has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I have a question for Carl, I think.
That's right. Carl?
It wasn't too many years ago when the county sent off a tornado warning, sounded these sirens, that the entire county got the entire warning at the same time. Was that correct?
That's correct.
How many years ago was that?
I believe that was when we updated the system to the ATI system that we have now in 2012, when we basically assumed responsibility for all the sirens in the county.
So the worst thing that happened here was we warned people that maybe should not have been warned. They got a warning that maybe wasn't relevant to them, but it's no different than what would have happened in 2012, for example.
Yes, Commissioner.
The people in Derby, people in the polygon, got essentially got an early warning, something that was actually real. And for that, I actually kind of appreciate that in a sense because had we known 15 minutes earlier this is about to hit. I can tell you, there was people in the Oklaun community that typically will shelter in churches, for example.
Yes.
Those churches were not open. They go down there normally, if they know there's bad weather coming in, they'll open those churches up so people from the community can have a place to go. At that time of day, that did not happen. Those people actually hit those doors, waiting for them to come open the doors, and they didn't open. And so there was people I know that got up and they turned on generators and stuff and just getting ready for the potential power outages, for example, because they're pumping water. And so there's, this early warning, as much as people, you know, decry the extra warning, for example, for the people inside the polygon, actually, I would say it was not really a negative thing, although it was accidental. It was real. And what happened at 5:00 in the morning was, I woke up that morning praising God that we didn't have houses destroyed. And we had some roofs that were damaged, we had some windows broken, we had some property damage, there was trees down throughout the entire community. We had, you know, some commercial signs down, we had some asphalt damage, believe it or not. But for the most part, there was not a single injury, there was nobody that suffered, you know, physically for themselves or their families. The property that was damaged can all be repaired, and for that, I am actually thankful. And I'll tell you also, it's been extremely awesome to see the community rally their neighborhoods and to help each other the way they have. I am actually very encouraged to see so many people being so giving and helping their neighbors. And I was out Sunday trying to find people to help, and frankly, there were so many people on the streets helping already, I couldn't really find areas that hadn't been touched already. I went to church Sunday morning, and by Sunday at 11:30, 11:45, I drove the entire city. And I would tell you, there was literally thousands and thousands of people out helping in the neighborhoods, and I was extremely encouraged. I know the help is continuing on. Some of the stuff is massive damage. There were some large trees that fell on homes, for example. Lord willing, there'll be insurance to help with some of those things. I saw some vehicles that were totaled because trees fell on vehicles, for example. So there were some bad things that did happen, but honestly, if this is the worst thing to talk about, life is pretty good. And I am
Agreed.
grateful that it wasn't worse than it was. And tree damage is certainly, you know, disappointing perhaps, but man, this could have been way worse. And so I want to say thank you to our staff for all they've done. Thank you for Public Works for bringing that tub grinder down south and working with the city of Derby to help as many people as possible with their limbs that way. And I think in a few weeks from now, we'll probably look around and probably won't be able to tell it even happened for the most part. So I just want to say thank you for, very many people for all they did. And I know this people, this made a lot of news. I think it's interesting that just a few years ago, this was normal. And what actually happened inside the polygon, it was really not a negative thing, I call that a positive thing. So thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. We've got a break now so that we can get ready for the commission meeting, but I wanted to make sure that none of the electeds had anything that they wanted to talk about in the room, that it looked like it. Okay? With that, we'll take a break. We'll reconvene at 10:00 for a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.